Next item under public hearing.
Item 6B, hold public hearing and take the following actions to approve the nine-unit multifamily residential project at 500 Sylvan Avenue. Waive first reading and introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 12.96 of the San Bruno Municipal Code to establish a planned development district. Update the zoning map. And adopt a development plan for the multifamily residential development located at 500 Sylvan Avenue. And adopt a resolution approving a planned development permit, architectural review permit, conditional use permit. And authorize the city manager to execute a development impact fee agreement for the multifamily residential development located at 500 Sylvan Avenue.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor O'Connell.
I need to leave the dais. I have property that's within 500 feet of the subject.
Thank you. So Vice Mayor's Connell will be recused on this item. And we'll certainly let you know because you don't want to miss Keith's presentation after. Just wait a minute, please. Okay. Who's taking lead? Matt?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. My name is Matt Newbaumer. I'm an associate planner with the Community Development Department here at the City of San Bruno. Tonight I will be providing you with a presentation on the proposed development located at 500 Sylvan Avenue. Additionally, the project architect, Mr. Kuhn, is in attendance and will be presenting and providing additional details regarding the architectural elements of the proposal. I'd like to also point out that the property owner, Mr. Gandhi, is in attendance as well. Just want to provide an overall agenda for tonight's presentation. The presentation will first start with the objective for tonight's meeting. Next, I will describe the existing conditions of the subject property. Then I will present the project details, provide a chronology of major milestones for the project, and will provide additional staff analysis regarding a number of different subject matters. The presentation will conclude with a restatement of the requested project actions. The objective for this item is to receive specific project-level information related to the proposed nine-unit multifamily development located at 500 Sylvan Avenue. And to approve the project by adopting a sequoia conformity determination, waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 12.96 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. And to adopt a resolution approving a planned development permit, an architectural review permit, a conditional use permit, and authorize the city manager to execute a development impact fee agreement. The site itself is located on the northwest corner of Sylvan Avenue and Green Avenue and is approximately 7,300 square feet in total area. Site is located one block west of San Mateo Avenue. Surrounding uses to the west, north, and east of the subject site are two-story multifamily apartment buildings. As you travel further in the northerly direction, the neighborhood transitions to a lower-density residential district consisting of one- and two-story single-family dwellings. There are a wide variety of uses located to the south of the subject property. There's a city-owned parking lot, a single-family dwelling, an office, and the Ramada Inn is also located to the south. The site is currently developed with a vacant dental office. The site has a general plan land use designation of transit-oriented development. The property is also located within the Transit Corridors Plan area, and within the Transit Corridors Plan area there are five character areas. This site is located within the Central Business District or CBD character area. The zoning for the site is R2 low-density residential. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing vacant structure and construct in its place a three-story multifamily building consisting of nine residential units and a total of 14 parking spaces. The nine-unit residential building would consist of six two-bedroom units, two one-bedroom units, and one studio unit which is located on the ground-floor level. A number of different planning approvals are required as presented in the graphic. The proposed project is different than what is currently allowed under the existing R2 zoning designation. Therefore, the underlying zoning district, the R2 zoning, would have to be amended and we would be changing the R2 zoning to a PD to allow for the proposed project. A planned development permit is always required when establishing a PD zone. An architectural review permit is required for the new building. And lastly, a conditional use permit is required to establish a ground-floor residential unit. This type of application requires review from the Architectural Review Committee and Planning Commission and final approval from the City Council. City Council approval is required because of the proposed zoning district amendment which is considered a legislative act. All legislative acts must be approved by the City Council. This graphic represents the overall project chronology. As part of the Transit Corridor Plan pre-submital process, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting in May of 2017. Thirteen members of the public were present. The applicant submitted a formal application in February 2018. As part of the formal application review process, the project was reviewed by the Planning Commission on March 19, 2019. At that meeting, the Planning Commission adopted a resolution recommending that the City Council adopt an ordinance for the associated zoning district amendment. The Planning Commission also adopted a resolution recommending that the City Council approve the planned development permit, the architectural review permit, and the conditional use permit. In terms of the overall site layout, the project meets all setback requirements and development standards that are found within the Transit Corridors Plan area. Additionally, the Transit Corridor Plan Design Guideline A1-1 requires buildings to be oriented with entrances facing a major street. As proposed, the main entrance, which includes the lobby as represented by the red arrow on the graphic, is located on the south side of the building facing Sylvan Avenue, which would be considered the major street in this specific instance. In terms of massing and scale, staff finds that the building is respecting the overall scale and development pattern of the surrounding residential neighborhood. Both Sylvan Avenue and Green Avenue provide a good amount of architectural interest. Specifically, the second-floor walkway overhangs the Sylvan Avenue garage entrance by approximately four feet. There's also two projecting elements that provide additional architectural interest along the Green Avenue elevation. And as previously noted, surrounding uses to the west, north, and east of the two-story of the subject site are two-story multifamily buildings. Along the west-side elevation, three individual landscape lattices with vines help break up the blank facade. And along the north elevation, two balconies are provided which help provide additional architectural interest. In terms of overall landscaping, the applicant is proposing a variety of drought-tolerant trees, shrubs, ground covers, and vines throughout the property. I'd also like to point out that there are two existing heritage trees located on-site. Those are two Hollywood junipers as represented in the photos on the slide. These heritage trees would be removed as a result of the project. Therefore, the applicant would be required to obtain a heritage tree removal permit. I'd like to point out that the San Bruno Municipal Code requires that any heritage tree removed shall be replaced with either two 24-box-sized trees or one 36-inch box-sized tree. In this particular case, the applicant is electing to install six 24-inch box trees which exceeds the municipal code requirements. Regarding parking, the proposed draft Transit Corridor Plan parking requirements require 9 to 15. It's an overall range of parking spaces for the nine dwelling units proposed of this unit mix type. However, the City Council provided direction to staff in January of 2019 to prepare a zoning code amendment to codify revised Transit Corridor Plan parking requirements that are slightly higher than the existing standards. Based on this direction, the revised Transit Corridor Plan multifamily parking regulations would require that studios and one-bedroom units contain one stall per unit. Units with two or more bedrooms would contain two stalls per unit. And then there would be .1 yes parking spaces required per unit. 16 parking spaces would be required for the proposed project based on these specific standards. However, it is not feasible to add an additional two stalls without losing an additional housing unit or reducing the number of proposed bedrooms. Staff takes into consideration that the project was submitted to the city and deemed complete prior to the City Council's study session and direction. Staff is currently working on the associated zoning code amendments for the parking regulations, which we anticipate bringing to the City Council later this summer. In terms of the proposed project, as represented within the plans, there are a total of 13 parking spaces represented. In the interest of providing as much parking on-site as possible, staff has included a condition of approval requiring an additional parking space be incorporated along the Sylvan Avenue frontage located directly to the east of the Sylvan Avenue curb cut. Therefore, a total of 14 parking spaces would be constructed on-site or would be provided on-site. Staff finds that this is acceptable given the timing of the project relative to the new parking standards. In terms of fee requirements, the project is subject to the city's affordable housing program requirements. The proposed project includes nine apartment units. A residential impact fee is required for all rental residential developments consisting of five or more units. The residential impact fee amounts to $25 per square foot. Based on the overall square footage of the proposed development, the residential impact fee would amount to $206,450. The developer will also make a payment of $98,271 to the city's unrestricted capital reserve fund based on the development impact fee agreement. All fees are due prior to building permit issuance. In conclusion, staff is supportive of the proposed project, and we find that would greatly improve the appearance of the existing lot and provide much-needed housing in the community. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt a sequoia conformity determination for the proposed multifamily residential project. We recommend waiving the first reading and introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 12.96 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. And we recommend adoption of a resolution approving a planned development permit, architectural review permit, conditional use permit, and authorizing the city manager to execute a development impact fee agreement. This concludes my staff presentation. As previously noted, the project architect, Mr. Kuhn, is in attendance and will be presenting the architectural elements of the proposal. That being said, I'd be happy to answer any clarifying questions that you have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions at this moment for staff who want to proceed? Thank you, Matt. So did we want to hear from the architect? Please. Thank you.
Excuse me while I switch glasses. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Alan William Kuhn, architect on this project. I understand I have five minutes to discuss the design of this new building in San Bruno. So I'd like to know, the first thing that I did when I undertook this project was to review the design guidelines that the city published. There are scores of design guideline requirements, and I've met several of them. But tonight I'd like to share with you the 10 most important design guidelines that are incorporated into this building design. First of all, I'd like to say that we did everything we could to meet the objectives of the Transit Corridor Plan and including providing covered, not covered, but protected storage spaces for bicycles. I think we have five, and we have two additional bicycle spaces in addition to our parking spaces. So the first thing I'd like to talk about, and I have 10 of what I consider the most important design elements, and I'll get through them as quickly as I can, but I think they might be interesting to you. The first one that stands out in the design guidelines is one that's called visual anchors. And so you have to say, "Well, what's a visual anchor?" Well, the great architect Frank Lloyd Wright referred to visual anchors as terminal masses. He used to say that if you take care of the terminal masses on a building, the rest of the building will take care of itself. And over the years, I've adopted that philosophy. So in this case, we have terminal masses at the corner being the elevator shaft. And on the left side of the building, on Sylvan, we have a stairway which is also an access. And on the right side of the building, I have a terminal mass that goes from Green Street, and it's actually a storage room that I built out to terminate that part. The other design guideline refers to unique roof lines having shallow and deep overhangs that create shadows and add depths to the facade. Well, this building has varied roof overhangs that creates shadows and lots of depth. The minimal roof overhang is one foot, but some of the roof overhangs are greater, as much as six feet. And so the combination of the balcony overhangs, the roof overhangs, and the various dimensions on the overhangs makes that particular design guideline work very well. Another requirement is number three, articulated step backs. And so what does that mean? That means the building can't just be a box on a box. So in this case, I've stepped back the stairways, the balconies, and the second and third floors. And so this too adds to the visual interest of the building. Another design guideline is number four, access to sun and air on all sides. And this building accomplishes that. And the building is designed not just as a facade, but all the way around that structure provides plenty of light and air for the future tenants. One of the most difficult things to do, and Recology was here tonight to talk about a little bit of what they require, but the trash enclosures are another important thing then. And so they have to be accessible to Recology but not visible for the public from the street right-of-way. And this is accomplished by tucking the trash bins and so forth close enough for easy access by Recology but hidden from view. Item number six refers to articulated forms, architectural details, changes of materials, projections, and recesses. And again, there are lots of projections and recesses and changes of materials. We incorporate some stone on the ground level at the garage entry. And also on the right side on Green Street, we've got a stone treatment just prior to that stairway on that side right there. And all of it combines with other architectural details at the stairway and the balconies to give that kind of change of detail and material. So the other, on upper-floor balconies, the private patios that provide outdoor spaces for the residents is another requirement of the guideline. And in this case, we have a situation where the balconies are used to go from one side of the building to the other, from the elevator to the units. But each unit has a large private balcony enclosure. Some of them are toward the rear. The one-bedroom apartments, for instance, have balconies at the rear and the front. And so of all of them, they've got the nicest balcony set up. But the balconies themselves are much larger than you will find on most apartment buildings anywhere on the peninsula. And so my client and I discussed that, and we thought that was an important element to incorporate without doubt. Number eight is the accent lighting, indirect downlighting, and so forth. And so this opportunity presents itself on the overhanging balconies where we have recessed lights that are indirect, casting light down from the upper levels and also from ground lighting up which will accent the stone facade and portions of the landscaping. Number nine provides south-facing facade that maximizes heat gain and natural sunlight. This is something that's important for just the comfort of the property and the ability for this building to, shall we say, collect heat and light. Number 10, drought-tolerant landscaping using drip irrigation and pervious materials all around. And we've accomplished that as well. And I think when this building is built, and I will say also lastly that my office is right across the street, and so I knew when I designed it, I'd be looking at this forever. And so this has taken three years of my life to produce this design, and I think it's a good one for the city. Any questions?
Thank you very much. And I didn't have you timed. I know you've been working, and Mr. Gandhi, you've been working long and hard on this, so we definitely wanted to make sure we heard from you tonight. So we have no speaker cards?
We do not.
Is there anybody in the audience that wanted to speak on this item? Once we close public hearing, anybody will be precluded from going to the podium. Seeing and hearing none. Can I have a motion and second to close public hearing?
I move you close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, second to close public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's a 4-0 with one recusal. And now we'll bring it back to council for comments or questions.
Comments? It's a great addition to the neighborhood. It's a beautiful building and design, so I think that's great. Added additional housing is great to the area. I guess my only concern is really parking, and I don't want to see parking overflow into the public parking lot, which is already difficult to find parking for the downtown San Mateo Avenue. So I know in one of our previous projects, we required for the Mills Park, we've discussed having, if there was any type of permit program implemented, that we would not allow them to be part of that program.
Matt?
Yeah.
Or John? Who's taking it? Take it.
So yes, we have talked about that for some of our larger developments. It is not in this agreement for this development.
And the only parking on the street, there's one parking stall on the street in addition, so nothing on either Green or Sylvan? Just the one?
Director.
Hi, Darcy Smith, Community Economic Development Director. The on-street parking, because this is a corner, I think there's more than one stall. Yeah, there's five on the street. So that was one of the considerations that we took into account in applying the parking standards, that there's already more on-street parking on this location because it's on a corner than you would normally see.
So what was the additional parking? There was 13 plus one or something?
Correct, yeah. So the additional parking was an area of the site where staff and working in collaboration with the project architect found a location to add a stall. It will require relocation of the guest or short-term bicycle parking, but we found that to be a better use of that limited space, and so that will provide for an extra stall. And frankly, the only way to meet the new recommended parking standards is to either lose a unit or to convert two-bedroom units to one-bedroom units, so therefore to reduce the bedroom count. And because staff had been working for so many years, as you heard on this project, and it was deemed complete August 2018, there was just some relief that we felt like we could grant to this project. But I want to emphasize, this is the only one. And so the other projects, such as Mills Park Plaza, the bigger project, that weren't so close to getting before the public hearing, we are requiring them to meet the new recommended parking standards. So this was the only one that was caught in between that council study session in January and this public hearing, and there were not easy solutions other than losing a unit, dropping, or bedrooms.
Right. I had another question, but as I was listening intently, so comes back, I'll ask it.
Thanks. Marty?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yeah, parking. Parking is bigger than I think a lot of people really think it is. Throughout our city and especially in the east side of town, I experience it all the time. So I'm not comfortable with allowing a project of this size, and it's small, but with six two-bedrooms, two one-bedrooms, and a studio, and it seems like there's maybe one guest parking? Is that correct? There's one guest parking?
That's correct.
Right. That's not going to work. You're going to have guests over. So I would, I know it's not our preference to negotiate from the dais. However, I think that it's important that we're consistent, that parking already is impacted in the neighborhoods, and asking for the agreement to be amended or to include the provision that we've done at 111 San Bruno Avenue to prohibit occupants in that building to participate in a parking permit program. The reason being is that we're allowing denser housing with more housing into a smaller space. So the whole point there is that cars aren't needed because it's close to a transit corridor. Well, then, if not needed, then let's put it in writing. Five more cars in that neighborhood would be a lot. So that's what I would like to see, and I could support this project. I understand they've been waiting. But I think our residents have been waiting for a long time about some solution to the parking. One guest parking is, you can't even have a party. You're going to have people, you know, in the streets. And did we do a parking study to see how impacted currently the streets are? No? Okay.
Director.
So no, we didn't do a parking study just because the project was, I'll just say, so close to meeting the parking requirements. We weren't doing anything very unusual, and we had clear standards that we could apply. But I want to emphasize around the guest parking is that the requirement that we got council feedback on is .1 stalls per unit or one guest stall on-site. And then some guests can park on the street, which we have the five street parking stalls adjacent to the project frontage.
Just to expand upon that, I think it's important to note, one, that the project does fall well within the range of the current standards, actually on the higher realm of the current standards. It does not meet the new standards that came about just earlier this year and that need to be formally promulgated. So what's on the books the project meets. It does also meet the guest parking requirement. It is a very small nine-unit project, and so that is part of the consideration in all of the analysis that went into the project. In particular, not including the residential parking program because it is such a small project and they are meeting the current standards. One of the potential challenges with the prohibition of this building participating in the RPP because it is such a small complex and it only has one guest parking stall is that if they are prohibited from participating in an RPP program, the guests will have nowhere to park because they will not be able to get a guest pass through that program. And so the prohibition of participating in any future residential parking program really is most applicable to very large units that have several guest parking stalls. But when you're talking about a project of this scale, it's just really complicated to do that and to have that prohibition. That's not to say if council is adamant about including it that we can't go back to the developer and try and accomplish that. But what I'm doing is articulating why that was not included, just due to the size and scale and some of the complexities of a nine-unit building that is already meeting the standards that we have on the books and that that we have on the books and that frankly began in 2017. And so this was both for the parking standards and the development impact fees, one of those pipeline projects that we talked about, that was really wedged in between the implementation of the DIF and that had begun. And it was one of those projects in particular that we sat down and negotiated with because they were truly a pipeline project where staff had been working with the applicant since 2017.
Anything else?
No.
No, finish that, Mark.
So I understand that, but our residents are already having a hard enough time, and this additional unit is going to create additional hardship on the community. So I still would like to see that, and I'll leave it at that for the time being, and we'll see what my colleagues have to say.
Laura, you remember the question?
I remember the question, so I want to jump in real quick. Thank you. Is the parking sold separately, or will this be required to be included? So I don't, you know, want somebody to, can't afford rent or can't afford to, because we all know how it is, it's pretty expensive.
So one of the conditions of approval that staff is recommending is that the applicant shall submit a parking management plan describing exactly how parking spaces will be assigned. A minimum of one parking space per unit shall be required, meaning required to be assigned to the unit as part of the lease, and these are rentals, so it's just done through the lease. And then any additional stalls in excess shall have priority assignment to the two-bedroom units.
Okay.
But the way this typically works in practice is, again, since they're leases and not condos, and the parking stalls aren't like deeded with the unit that's purchased, it's done through the lease. And if someone were to rent a two-bedroom apartment, say, "Well, I actually only need one onsite stall because I only have one car," then that extra stall could be assigned to a one-bedroom unit if there was the demand there. But that said, we will require the parking management plan, and what that does is provide the details of how it will be assigned. Typically, the spaces, for example, are numbered, and there's actually parking passes that are given to the vehicles, either a hang tag or a sticker, and so it's all, you know, very managed very thoroughly. And then usually the guest parking is signed such that no residents can park there, for example, overnight. It's reserved for guests. That condition of approval is required prior to building permit issuance, and is something that staff reviews and sometimes requires revisions, and ultimately is part of the project approvals.
Perfect. And they'll at least have one stall that they'll have to be required?
That's correct, yes. But it's not unbundled. So if you were to go to rent a unit, you're not then told, "Oh, you need to pay an extra $100 or $200..."
Perfect.
"...on top of your rent." And what that does is, you know, some people are willing to pay it, and some people aren't, and then they take their chances, street parking. And so it was really important when we got your feedback in January, that you gave us feedback that you don't support the unbundling, because again, that can result in people not paying the additional charge, which I've seen as high as $200 per stall per month, which is a lot. And then those folks can park on the street.
Great. Thank you for making sure that was included.
Michael?
Thank you. So I generally like the project. I think it is very well-designed. The scale is definitely appropriate to that area. It's definitely an improvement over some of the other multifamily units that are in the area. So this will definitely be an improvement. I share the concern about the parking, about it being a little short, but I also understand that we, this council, changed the rules, and we shouldn't be holding people responsible for any changes in those rules when those designs were already submitted and gone through the process. I think that would be very unfair of us to tell someone that they should design based on some parameters, and then we changed our minds. We understood that there was a requirement to do that, and I definitely support the direction we're going in. But being that this project is already in flight, I wouldn't be in favor of trying to change any of those design parameters. In talking about what we can do with residential parking permits, I was just wondering if we could draw a boundary for those permits to include only single-family homes that are basically to the north of this property and exclude the, basically, the bulk of Sylvan, which is mostly multifamily units. And I believe we've discussed before where we can draw those boundaries pretty much anywhere where we see appropriate.
I think the answer to that is a little complicated, but we do have leeway in drawing the boundaries for the residential parking program. However, we are not able to go around certain buildings based on their characteristic, single-family or multifamily. And so one of the things that we talked about when this initially came up is that when the residential parking program is available and we draw those boundaries, it's really meant to protect the residential areas, and so we can draw it such that those boundaries do not include the central business district, mainly San Mateo Ave and maybe some of the surrounding blocks. And so I do think we have some leeway in how we draw those boundaries, but it needs to be objective, and it can't go around certain buildings and not include others.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And are there any, I believe that that side of the street on Sylvan is all basically no parking zone, so is that changing? Or...
I don't know of any restrictions. I think that the street, you can park on Sylvan and the side street.
Okay. So maybe it was just, no parking? I thought I saw some no parking signs.
Like around the corner, it's probably red, right, for sight visibility? And sometimes there's red tripping around the driveways, but staff's recollection at this point...
So I just wanted to verify that there are no changes to that as part of this development?
Okay, it looks like there's no parking 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, but that's a little odd. We can evaluate this a little more detail. Yeah, some sort of signage, but that seems odd.
Okay. All right. That was it. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please, Marty. I just wanted to clarify. I'm not advocating a change of the internal parking requirement, I get that. It's just that I believe that our community's parking problem has been not taken care of, and this is just going to make it worse. So that's how I feel. I think it's tough enough. I know how it is. And one more, one more building with, I don't know, six more, seven more cars, I mean, it's just going to make it that much worse. It all pushes out. So I would like to have staff ask the developer at 111 San Bruno Avenue. We asked, and the developer-owner stood up and said, "Okay, we're okay with that." So I'm asking for that, and I can support it with that.
Any other comments or questions from staff? I mean, from council to staff or to applicants? Anything on the comment that you just heard, or anything else from us up here?
I mean, we can certainly ask the applicant whether they would agree to the prohibition of participating in any future residential parking program. Again, I'll restate the complications with doing that for a very small building of nine units. Totally understand the parking concerns and the current impact on the neighborhood, but our approach to this was respected of the fact that the project begun under certain guidelines in 2017, and it was very much a pipeline project that was really wedged in between a, frankly, a wholesale changing on development impact fees and a changing on parking standards. And this is one of those projects that kind of was caught right in the middle. And so we did work with the rules and ensured that they were on the higher end, and took a hard look at the design and was able to recommend an additional parking space to bring them to 14, just one shy of what the total range is, which is nine to 15. So, but we can certainly make the request.
Please.
And for people that aren't aware of the area, there is a public parking lot across the street, so I don't think we're asking, at least I don't think I'm asking too much for our residents that live there, that a guest could go park across the street in the public parking lot. Currently, it's free, currently. So, and you don't need a permit to be there. So you could park there. I think it's two-hour parking there, or five-hour parking there, I believe, up until six or seven o'clock. So overnight parking, there's spaces over there. People have to be aware that when you're moving into San Bruno, there's some parking problems. And so leave that extra car, take public transit. That's kind of the whole concept of transit corridor plan, so I'll leave it with that.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, thoughts? So you've heard a council member that was just asking the question, so is that a question that can be asked, or...
So should council like to direct us to formally ask that question? We can continue the hearing and come back to the city council once we have completed that process.
Go ahead. Please.
So if you continue it to a date certain, such as the next meeting, then we can get this information back to you. If you continue it to date uncertain, then we have to repeat the public noticing. I don't know if we can accomplish that before the next meeting, just because there's a public notice, it's a 10-day. So a date certain allows staff to get this back before you, May 28.
Good catch.
I think if that's the only item, and we can work on that, I'm confident we can get it back for you with a revised staff report, revised conditions of approval. But if you continue to that date certain, then we don't need to go through the public notice process.
Okay. What's the wish? I've heard yours, so what's the wish from my colleagues?
To the chair, I would recommend that we move forward, make their request, but not make it a condition of approval. That's, I mean, I agree we can ask, but I don't believe we should make that a condition of approval. I'm ready to move forward and approve the project.
Laura?
I'd like to ask, I'd like to get the answer.
So then if you make the motion to continue it to the date certain, to the May 28 meeting, we can do our best to work with the applicant, get it right back to you.
Absolutely. I wanted a date certain. I don't want to have to redo the public hearing notice. I want as quickly as possible to deal with these two gentlemen. I think they have been patient with this city. They have been doing this since 2017, from impact fees to design changes and what have you. And I think, you know, we need to be respectful of them as they are trying to be of our community. So with that said, we're going to go ahead and have this date certain for the next council meeting with not having to hold the public hearing. Is that Mr. City Attorney?
I would recommend a motion to continue.
Is there a motion to continue?
A motion to continue.
Is there a second?
That would be to a date certain of May 28.
Date certain.
Motion to continue to a date certain of May 28.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion made, and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Three, one.
Motion carries. Three, one to one. Councilmember solidar opposed, and Vice Mayor O'Connell recused.
Yes.
To a date certain of May 28.
Thank you. Please.
Items...
No, I was just telling you.
Okay.
We'll be allowing the Vice Mayor to return.
I'll read the title when Vice Mayor O'Connell returns.
Thank you. Okay, can you, I'll read it.